I'd like to call our meeting to order today. I'd like to welcome everyone for attending. We have an invocation today by council member, Ms. Blackwell.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in prayer. God of all, we pray that you would give us your wisdom and understanding in all things. For Lord, we know wisdom is better than gold and understanding better than silver. And we, as council of Salisbury, need your discernment for the many decisions before us. And finally, Lord, we thank you for your servant Windsor Eagle, whom we honor today. Thank you for his service to our children and to our community. And we pray, Lord, that you will bless him in his retirement. Amen.
Thank you very much. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
A pledge of religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we had the Patriots Memorial Dedication today at City Park. It was a very nice presentation. It's a beautiful addition to our park. I advise everyone to ride by. I think you're going to be really surprised what you see out there. We're very proud of it for Salisbury, very proud of being in one of our parks now. I'd like to mention, or I'd like to recognize all our visitors today and thank you for coming. Welcome everyone here today. All those are on the web and later will be taped on XS-16 television. We follow a written agenda and it's up here in the front if you need a copy. And also, we're on the website, www.salsburync.gov. One of the things we're going to do today, we're admitting number 16 off of our closed session. We're not going to have our closed session today, so we're taking that off the agenda. Now, to start off, I would like to recognize two outstanding folks with the city of Salisbury, Myra and Kelly. This is a proclamation for you ladies for Municipal Clerks Week. And we'd like to honor you two ladies today for this proclamation. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of our local government, exists throughout the world, whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides professional link between citizens, governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be very mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas municipal clerk services information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continuously strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of the state providence, the state providence and county and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most important, we recognize the conscience of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Paul B. Woodson Jr., Mayor of Salisbury, do recognize the week of April 29th through May the 5th, 2012, Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our city clerk, Myra Hurd, and deputy clerk, Kelly Baker, and all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and exemplary dedication to communities they represent this first day of May, 2012. And you ladies do a wonderful job, and I have really... Mayor Clutz always bragged on y'all, and I really know why she did, and I'm bragging on y'all now. You're hard-working ladies. Y'all would come up, we'd like to have a picture and present these to y'all.
I just want to know how you did this without them knowing about it.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for all y'all do. We'll get a picture here. Y'all smiling.
Okay. One, two, three.
Two, three.
One more. One, two, three.
Thank you, y'all. Thank y'all. Council to recognize Dr. Windsor Eagle for his years of service as principal of Salisbury High School. Dr. Eagle, I have a proclamation for you. I'd like to read that, and I'd like you to come up after I read it, and we want to present something to you. And I can tell you that I know that Dr. Eagle has been one dedicated principal for many, many years. Never heard a bad thing about you, Dr. Eagle, and that's amazing with all those years and all those students. Whereas Dr. Windsor Eagle has served as principal of Salisbury High School for 32 years, and whereas Dr. Eagle's professional commitment to the academic and personal success of the Salisbury High School student body seeks the expectations associated with the performance of duties assigned to the school administrator, and whereas, under his leadership, Salisbury High School has gained renown, gained renown as one of the nation's best performing high schools, according to the U.S. News and World Report, whereas his unmistakable voice over the public address system, I heard that a lot myself, has hundreds of Salisbury High sporting events, integral part of the atmosphere, entertainment, and excitement of the horny sporting events. And whereas, over the course of his career, Dr. Eagle's vision for the Salisbury High School campus includes expansion of classroom space, improvements to the landscaping and grounds, renovations of the dining facilities, renovations of the Goodman Gymnasium, development of the Robertson Sports Complex, and the National Register and inclusion in the national, own the National Registration of Historic Places. And whereas, Dr. Eagle has exemplified servant leadership through participation in civic affairs, loyalty to the school, and placing excessive as faculty and students above himself, whereas due to his efforts, Salisbury High School serves as an important contributor to the culture, history, and quality of life for all citizens of this city. Now therefore, on this occasion of his retirement and honor his service and remarkable career, I, Paul B. Woodson Jr., Mayor of the city of Salisbury, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May the 1st, 2012, as Dr. Windsor Eagle Day, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the accomplishments of Dr. Eagle during his time at Salisbury High School, and to express a great appreciation for his hard work, his dedication, and his support for Salisbury High School and the greater community of Salisbury this first day of May, 2012. And Dr. Eagle, if you would please come up. Let's give him a big hand.
Okay. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. Why don't you shake everybody's hand?
Congratulations. Thank you so much. All you guys.
That's all right. Council, I would like to open the floor up for comments about Dr. Eagle. I know we all know him, and anybody have anything they'd like to say about him?
Well, I know most of the members of our council have had children who went through Salisbury High under Dr. Eagle's leadership, and I happen to have one who's there now. So I turned to my favorite 16-year-old and asked for her words on this wisdom. And I said, "I'm preparing remarks regarding Dr. Eagle, his retirement and his impact. Do you have any ideas?" "Well, Dr. Eagle is pretty cool. Do the students respect him? Yes, he's the face of Salisbury High even more than the Hornet. Do you think it will be the same next year without him?" See, with a 16-year-old, they're going to give you as little as possible, and you have to keep pulling it out of them. "Do you think it'll be the same next year without him? No, I feel like we will have to learn to trust the new principal. We trust Dr. Eagle because we know that he pushes us academically and through school spirit. So this new person is going to need support. Dr. Eagle leaves big shoes to fill." And with those words from a student who's currently under his leadership, I felt that anything that I might say just was meaningless. So my hat's off to you, Dr. Eagle. Thank you so much for the impact you've had on our community. And my husband said, "You had better keep announcing football games."
I would like to pay you the, one of the, I think one of the best compliments I could pay you. My daughter went through your high school, and she went to Chapel Hill. And she told me, she said, "Dad, you know something?" She said, "Dr. Eagle and Salisbury High School, it was tougher than the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill." She said, "It was tougher academically." She said, "I didn't have to study nearly as hard at Chapel Hill as I did at Salisbury High." And of course, we know what you did for that school and that college, I mean, the school, the high school, and we know all the awards you got in one of the top high schools in the country. And we just wish you the best, and we're sorry your retirement for years and years. I heard all the parents say, "Oh, just one more year till my child gets out, and just two more years till my child gets out." So this is your day, and we really honor you, and thank you for all the wonderful things you've done for the last 32 years, Dr. Eagle.
Well, Dr. Eagle, I would like to personally thank you for the education and development of my children, Jacqueline, William Jr., and Walillian. And because of your commitment and dedication and encouragement to education, thousands of students have gone on to be successful in their chosen careers. Your legacy to those you have served will continue to serve for years to come. I thank you, and I also thank your family for supporting you all of these years. May you somehow enjoy the fruits of your labor and reap the benefits of your unparalleled service to the students, families in the city of Salisbury, Rowan County, North Carolina, U.S., United States, and the international level, for all the lives you have touched and nurtured. And God bless you in your retirement. Thank you.
I'd just offer a couple of short comments. I know of two specific cases where you've made an impact. One was in a student that I had as a, as an RA. When he was younger, he came through your school, and his career aspiration was to become a teacher and come teach with you at Salisbury High School. That child, I think his name is Kyle Wisnig, I believe, I'll attribute that comment to him, but he thought enough of you that he wanted to follow his career after you and others that he'd seen also in that way. And that's, that's a real kind compliment when someone wants to emulate what they see in others. Another story I'll tell, on a day of caring that United Way does, I had the opportunity of being the site manager at a Salisbury High School project where we planted bushes around the track. And I asked you if, as a follow-up, several months later, how the bushes were doing, and you related a story. This is the attention to detail this man's put into his profession and the dedication he's shown to his school. When he warms up the hot water in the bathtub, he saved it in a jug so we could come and then water the bushes to make sure they didn't die through a hot summer. To me, that's, that level of detail is what makes a successful person. So that's a little bit of the roast comment you said, but it is something that I think is, tells a little bit of the character of who you are. I'll leave it with this. We talk about positive activities for youth, we talk about doing what we can make sure that folks, when they leave our homes, that they're prepared for the world. You've made a career of doing that, and I can't thank you enough for the impact you've made on countless lives through your career at Salisbury High School. So for what it's worth, I will, for one, thank you for your service. Thank you.
And if I could just add to that, I think it's honestly difficult to put into words what Dr. Eagle has meant to this city and to Salisbury High School. I can't imagine the school without him, frankly. And I have watched him very closely from different perspectives, one as a parent at the high school, one as a central office employee for eight years right after the merger, and most importantly, as 14 years as mayor. And frankly, I have watched him defend the school, I have watched him protect the school, and I have watched him make sure that it's the very best it could be. Sometimes I felt like he was the school, but I've never known a more dedicated individual to anything. We've seen his students excel continuously in academics, in athletics, and he was always there to encourage them and support them. So I'd just like to say, thank you, Dr. Eagle, for what you have meant to the school, the city, and to our students. You are certainly going to be missed, but you have made such a tremendous difference. Thank you so much.
Dr. Eagle, would you like to say anything?
Well, I'm very honored.
Come up, come up and come up to the mic. We'd really like to have this.
Don't kick it away from the door.
This is going to be a short meeting. We'd like to hear your comments.
Well, I've enjoyed being a part of the city of Salisbury. I was born and raised pretty close by a little town called Spencer, so I was always in awe of Salisbury. Boydton High School it was then. And just coming down and getting the chance to be the principal, it was very exciting and challenging, and we just jumped in and did all we could. We've had good staff, we've hired good people, we've had good results, we've had good students, and we've had some challenges, but all along, it's just molded into whatever we could do to make it the best, and we've tried hard. I do want to address Councilwoman Clutz. A few years ago, we had a little bit of disagreement on a sidewalk, and I promised if she got, if she went through with it, that I'd be the first to walk on it and proudly so, and I lived up to that, and I want to let you know. The sidewalk is good, you were right, we needed it, and I agree with you at this point. I didn't in the past, but I do now.
I appreciate that. And let me say too, as an alumnus of the school, that I've been so proud to watch it continue the way it was when I attended it, that you've made it even better. So I'm just very grateful for all you've done. Thank you.
And I truly appreciate this, and this is a...
You'll be remembered a long time in this town, and we're so glad we could honor you today.
Well, thank you.
And we hope you have a great retirement. Knowing you, you'll probably be back at work in a week or two, somewhere.
Somewhere.
Enjoy that garden, Dr. Eagle.
Thank you again, everybody. Thank you. Council to recognize the Community Appearance Commission for receiving the 2012 National Make a Difference Day Award and adopted budget ordinance amendment in the amount of $10,000 to appropriate this award to Ms. Lynn Recker.
Good afternoon, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. Once again, to thank the Community Appearance Commission, the Neighborhood Leaders Alliance, the many city departments, streets, sanitation, landscape that helped us, Brooklyn South Square Neighborhood, the 85 volunteers who came out to help with this project, and the many other vendors and other supporters that we had to make this project a success. We received the National Make a Difference Day Award in Washington, D.C. a couple weeks ago, and Mayor Woodson and our Community Appearance Commission Chairman Barbara Perry, who's in the audience, were able to go to Washington to receive this on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission and the city of Salisbury. That was quite an honor and wonderful opportunity. We were one of three cities to receive this award nationwide, of many that had submitted for it. The others were San Jose, California, and Jersey City, New Jersey. And just to remind our other, the listeners and TV viewers and online viewers, that the blockwork project was a one-day intensive neighborhood improvement project. It was held in the 200 and 300 blocks of South Shaver Street on October 22nd, which was Make a Difference Day in 2011. And 85 volunteers showed up to work on 13 different properties where we rebuilt steps and stair railings and painted buildings, and replaced landscaping, and did a number of things to improve these properties with the help of the neighborhood, of course, the leadership of the neighborhood, and with the help of the property owners. And we received, when we went to Washington, we really did receive the VIP treatment, which was a lot of fun for us. And Barbara, it started out in the Charlotte Airport where she got the complete pat-down, which she kind of expected might happen, and sure enough, it did. And as Mayor Woodson mentioned this morning at the dedication of the very impressive Memorial Flag Concourse, we did manage to squeeze in a visit to the World War II Memorial, and here we are entering the memorial with the Washington Monument behind us. And it was a wonderful space, well-designed, but our memorial here is, could compare on many, many levels. It's quite impressive this morning. So at the awards luncheon, of course, the big attraction for me and Barbara was Kevin Bacon, and getting to meet Kevin Bacon and hear his presentation about, and his explanation of how the Six Degrees got started and how it's transitioned to sixdegrees.org, which is an effort to make a, to encourage everybody to volunteer and make a difference in their And we followed the luncheon by going to the White House, and in the Indian Treaty Room of the White House, Mayor Woodson was a guest panelist, along with several dignitaries. And we were greeted by Hilda Solis, who is the United States Secretary of Labor. And we heard a number of speakers who talked about the importance of volunteering in your community. And the speakers included a corporate executive, the CEO of Deloitte Tax, and I found that to be very impressive because he really focused on hiring people who had a resume that included community service and including community service in his business. And I think that's just, it was so important to hear that and to hear about the power of volunteering and what it can do for a community. Of course, the highlight was to receive the big check, and we did receive $10,000. It goes to the Appearance Commission, and it will fund next year's Make a Difference Day project, a blockwork project. We have not yet selected the location. We have a meeting actually on Thursday night of this week, and I'd like this to be known, that we have a Neighborhood Leaders Alliance meeting at 4:00 at One Water Street, and we will be talking about the project that will be held on October 27th this year, and letting neighborhood leaders know how to apply for, on behalf of their neighborhoods, for that project. And you might recognize some of the folks in this picture. This is Nancy Cordez, she's a CBS news correspondent, and of course, Kevin Bacon, and Michelle Nance, she started the Hands-on Network 12 years ago in Atlanta, which has gone on to become the Points of Light organization, and then the CEO of Newman's Own, and the CEO of the Gunnet Corporation, and then I think you know the three in the foreground here. We've also got a blog now on the White House Office of Social Innovation and Civic Participation website, so we will plan to keep that up as we go along. I think that's great exposure for Salisbury and also for our project. And you can see this wonderful picture from our project. So once again, thanks to everybody who was involved. Thank you to the city council for being a supporter of this project and to the many of you who participated and got your hands dirty during the project. And we definitely enjoyed our trip. And I guess the remaining piece of business is to adopt an ordinance amending the 2011-12 budget for the city of Salisbury to appropriate the $10,000 Make a Difference Day Award to the line item that you have in front of you.
I'd like to mention, I also had a really nice time with Lynn and Barbara and seeing the World War II Memorial, and really proud of what we have also in Salisbury. But it was really inspiring that day to see folks from all over the country, and there was two, there was two children that received awards, and I think they were amazing. I wrote a letter to one today, Myra, I just signed it. It was an eight-year-old child, who actually was seven-years-old at the time, in Texas, stood out at Starbucks all day long and raised $2,700 for homeless animals. It was amazing for an eight-year-old to do that. And then there was a 15-year-old young girl whose school didn't have any library books, and at 15-years-old, this young lady raised $500,000 and put books in the library because the school system can't afford it. Is that right, 500,000?
She was close to 500,000.
Yeah. I was just, I thought, a 15-year-old, can you imagine that? A 15-year-old raising that kind of money? And Doug and I thought that we would extend her and offer for employment before she got to college. But it was, it was just a fantastic day. I really enjoyed it. I thought it was just, it was a good time in Washington, and everybody was friendly. We had a beautiful day, and everybody was so cordial at the White House and at the Reagan Building, and it's just a nice time. It's such a nice award for our city, and thank you for all the hard work, Lynn, and putting the application in and us winning. And Barbara, you're putting everything together, you and Lynn, and we really appreciate it. I said up there that mayors get a lot of honors because of all the folks that do all the hard work, so I sincerely appreciate that. So I need a motion right now, folks, for...
Well, since I didn't do any hard work that day, I will make the motion.
Okay.
I move to adopt an ordinance amending the 2011-2012 budget ordinance of the city of Salisbury, North Carolina, to appropriate Make a Difference Day Award in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
The motion has a second. Anybody have any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Lynn.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to just say one thing about it. Lynn, in her customary humility, didn't mention her own role in that day, and it was amazing. Any of us trying to manage 83 people who had just shown up to do a job, can imagine what a house wreck that could be. And at each of the 13 houses, there were carefully laid out paint pans and paint rollers and five-gallon buckets of paint. There were tools at the appropriate areas, the wheelbarrows, the earth-moving equipment, the stuff to cut the bricks. Everything was meticulously acquired beforehand and laid out. Everyone was organized. We had plenty of food, which was important. And it just, it just ran like a clock, and all of it was because Lynn Recker served as the project manager for it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Thanks for a great job. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. Number seven. I'm to proclaim the following observance. National Day of Prayer, May the 3rd. National Police Week, May the 13th through the 19th. Peace Officers Memorial Day, May the 15th. All of these in 2012. Number eight. Council to consider the consent agenda. Approved minutes of the regular meeting of April 17th, 2012, and the special meeting of April 23rd, 2012. Close the 100 block of East Fisher Street from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight, Thursday, May the 3rd, 2012, to accommodate the Brick Street Live Concert. C, close the 100 block of South Lee Street, Saturday, June 23rd, 2012, from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. to accommodate the Salisbury Pride Celebration. D, accommodate a budget ordinance amendment to the FY 2000... Close that 100 block of East Fisher Street from 6:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, Thursday, May 3, 2012, to accommodate the Brick Street Live Concert. C, close the 100 block of South Lee Street, Saturday, June 23, 2012, from 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM to accommodate the Salisbury Pride Celebration. D, accommodate a budget ordinance amendment to the FY 2011-2012 budget in an amount of $2,436 to appropriate various donations to the parks and the Recreation Department. I said in a staff meeting this morning, I'm always amazed at how much money our city parks are able to raise and put back into our parks. Do we have a motion for this consent agenda or any comments?
I think a motion will be approved as read.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Any comments at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine, council to receive a presentation of staff regarding the Community Access Preservation Act, CAP, cap, consider adopting a resolution in support of HR 1746, the Community Access Preservation Act. I believe we have Jason St. Allen is coming up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us here today. I have with me Jason Parks, our fabulous station manager with Access 16 Television, and also a member of our communications team. And he's here to talk with you a little bit about the CAP Act, which is the Community Access Preservation Act, and a recent bill in the House that we're asking for support for so we can pass it on to our officials. But Jason will elaborate a little bit more about what that means for protecting our government access station here in Salisbury.
We'd also like to thank Maurice Price for covering me while I'm outside of the AV room cave. Yes, this is HR 1746, and I've looked at the bill, and I want to go ahead and declare it's probably one of the best bills I've ever read. I've read one bill. But it's a bipartisan bill, and basically, it provides community television stations with dedicated funding and ensures community television stations will be viewable by all cable subscribers, TV subscribers, I guess we can call that now. The main talking points of this bill is it's a national bill. It's going to remove the distinction between capital and operating and PEG support fees. So that means if we decide to collect subscriber fees from the stations, we can use it for subscriptions and operations and not just capital projects. And it makes sure local governments can secure funding for PEG channels from providers and ensures that local government are, have the right to have a channel, PEG channel. It also makes sure that cable operators transmit the PEG channels without charge to the local government. When I say PEG channels, that's a term for public, educational, and government channels. They group it under PEG. We, Access 16 is a government channel. It makes sure that the PEG channels are available on the basic tier of service and available to all subscribers without the need for additional equipment in order to get them. So you're not going to have to go out and purchase, you know, a DVR box to be able to get the station. It's on the bare minimum service. What we're looking at today is for your consideration to pass the resolution, and we'll send this approved resolution to state officials for their support. For more information on this, on the CAP Act, please visit the American Community Television Organization at the website provided. They're a really good support mechanism for PEG channels. And just a quick update for Access 16, we are currently relocating the facilities to City Hall. We hoping to eventually have an onsite studio to be able to shoot things here. Where we'll be launching a new TV server later this year with expanded capabilities, which we'll be really excited about. We're continuing to create promo videos for city departments, and we are always on the lookout for that new term, OPM, other people's money funding, so we can fund the station. And I'm sorry I took so long, but if there's any questions, please let me know.
That was good. That was good. That was short. Counsel, do we have any questions on this? If not, could I have a motion here for this resolution in support of this act?
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Thank you.
If I could. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution in support of HR 1746, the Community Access Preservation Act.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Any comment before we vote? Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Emily. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for presenting that to us.
Nice job.
Number 10, council to receive a presentation from the Police Department regarding application for a 2012 Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, in an amount of $38,332, and consider setting a public hearing for May 15, 2012. Chief Collins, I believe he'll make the presentation for us today, to us today.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to make you aware of the fact that we also have an opportunity to receive some funding, this being from the Justice Assistance Grant, also called JAG, which is the acronym for that. And the, as you said, the total amount that's being made available to Rowan County is $38,332. Now, this is a grant that is shared between ourselves and the Sheriff's Department. And of that $38,332, we will get to enjoy $24,221. We're gonna, as always, this is a non-competitive grant, also with no match. So essentially, we just have to report to them what we intend to do with it and then offer a public hearing for next, in the next meeting, to allow for any input or feedback from our community. We have met and intend to make use of these funds by purchasing some equipment that would enable us to do our jobs best. And I can present that fully now, or I can just wait until the next meeting, whichever you prefer.
Well, why don't we wait for the next meeting? And we'll just have a, is that okay with counsel? The next meeting be okay?
It's a little public hearing next time.
Okay. Let's, I need a, I need a motion for a public hearing.
I'll move that we set a public hearing for May 15, 2012, to receive public comment regarding an application for a 2012 Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, in the amount of $38,322.
Second. A motion second. We have any comments? Anybody, any questions or comments before we vote? Chief, thank you for doing that. Thanks for the grant. We appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 11, council to consider adopting an ordinance clarifying base rezoning of 16 parcels of the Land Development District Map Amendment, CD 02, 2012, Rowan Helping Ministries Homeless Shelter. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. Staff, when looking at the previously adopted ordinance, CD 02, 2012, failed to enumerate, if you will, the base rezonings of those 16 parcels. There was a typo also that went within the first ordinance that was adopted. It's actually 16 parcels. Upon further review and closer review of the geography, there is a sliver of land that is in fact not a parcel. It's a right-of-way. So it is in fact 16 parcels. However, when we looked at the parcels within that CD area and then wrote the ordinance, we did not enumerate and clarify which parcels were going to which base zoning. And this is simply a clarification. Chris and Pete Bogal are here representing Rowan Helping Ministries. If there are any questions, again, this is not changing the intent of the previously adopted ordinance. It is a clarification. And also, everything with the previously adopted ordinance is the same. It just essentially replaces the April 3 adopted ordinance.
Just clarifying a few things, cleaning a few things up.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Yes, the spirit and the intent is the same, and the site plan is the same, and all of the conditions that go within the ordinance are the same. You did take a look at the new ordinance versus the old ordinance, you can see that it's a lot more boring and longer now, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, in appreciation for the fact this is a clarification or a correction, if you will, on our prior approved motion, I'd like to go ahead and make the following motion.
Please.
Motion to adopt an ordinance amending the land development ordinance and the land development district map of the city of Salisbury, North Carolina, by rezoning 16 parcels that totally, excuse me, that total approximately three acres from the neighborhood mixed-use NMX and urban residential UR8-based districts to corridor mixed-use CMX and residential mixed-use RMX, to remove a portion of the general development A, GTA overlay from the petition area boundary and to establish a conditional district, CD overlay, to permit the development of a 31,507-square-foot homeless shelter, identifying the document, development documents, identifying permitted uses, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion before we vote? All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to this motion? Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming up. Let's see. 12, council to consider awarding a contract in the amount of $351,829.80 to Waste Pro of North Carolina Incorporated for Curbside Recycling Services. Anna, I believe is coming up. John? Okay. Tony? The trio today.
Mayor, City Council, we are here today to ask for your approval of a contract with Waste Pro for curbside recycling. And we went out for bids on this project and asked for three different options in our bid. The first was to leave things as they are and stay with the bins that we currently use, which I believe are 14-gallon bins. The second option was to go to a bi-weekly method using 96-gallon carts. And the third alternate was to allow businesses to participate in the recycling program. With that, we have recommended that we go to the bi-weekly 96-gallon cart method.
One of the things that we have received over the last several years from some of our citizens has been that we would like to recycle more, but these 14-gallon containers really doesn't allow very much to be recycled, especially if you start getting cardboard boxes from cereal boxes and maybe things you buy, they just don't fit in there very nicely. The other problem was, we had people saying, well, if it's raining or inclement weather, I put it out, and it gets messy. Or if I don't put it out, then I got so much to fall in, we're spilling all over the place. And then when the wind would come up, it'd blow across the neighborhood. So we have gotten requests so that we decided, as far as the bid, we would put in an option for a 96-gallon. One of the things we realized is these 96-gallon carts are pricey. So one of the things that we did do as part of the bid, rather than the city providing the carts, we put in there that the vendor would provide the carts. We weren't quite sure what the prices would get, but when we received the bids back, we were very pleasantly surprised, to the point that the recommended contract in front of the City Council today actually is a price that is a little less than what we're currently paying for every week. So we feel like that by going to this new method, it has several pros. Obviously, being a larger cart, it will allow for more items to be recycled. Bigger items will fit in it than will fit into the 14-gallon. We should not have issues with people, but stuff blowing across the neighborhood unless people recycling so much, they just can't get the top closed. And if so, I'm sure that we can give them another bin. It has wheels, so you don't have people struggling trying to carry something out. You can just roll it out. Another thing is, by going to bi-weekly, we don't have large trucks going through the neighborhood as much as we do now. It would be only every other week as opposed to weekly. And at this point, because of the fee where it's at, we do not anticipate any increase in the recycling fee. We'll evaluate it as part of the budget. But with this contract, we do not see that going up at all. The other pro is, we've had lots of businesses who approached us wanting to be able to recycle. And they have indicated that, yes, they'd be willing to offer this to businesses on the same basis as to residential, so it'd be the same fee. Now, obviously, they got huge amounts of cardboard. That probably is not going to fit in the bin, and we'll have to look at some other solution for that. I guess the biggest con is, it's a change to citizens. Rather than putting it out every week, it'll be every other week. So there'll have to be an educational process. We have talked to the recommended vendor here, and they have an educational process that they have utilized elsewhere, that they will provide information to each of our households with the process, when they'll be picked up. And even more importantly, they have indicated to us that they will allow us to provide additional information that they'll put as part of that package. So we'll be able to communicate some other items that we would like to communicate. So, and the only other option, problem could be is some folks may not have the ability to have this container, a place to store it. And if that is the case, and a citizen would like to continue to recycle but just don't have that space, the vendor has indicated they'll still pick up the 14-gallon container. So we're not, we're not trying to shut anybody out. So, Tony, you have any?
The vendor also has agreed to offer our backyard pickup also, so that'll still be in place.
With that, I'd like to entertain any questions. We do have one of their carts here, so that council can see it. It is a different color, obviously, than that that we're utilizing. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I think it's really good that we're doing it every two weeks. My daughter and son-in-law live in Kinston, and they only pick up once a month. And I asked them, because I knew this was kind of coming, and they said once a month was not enough because they were, it was running over. So every other week, I think is going to be good. And I think it's going to be better because a lot of people had complained to me that they couldn't carry, you know, put all the bottles and everything in the small, they're trying to carry them out, so. But I do think it might be a problem for some people. I'm glad you said they could still use the smaller bins if they wanted to, because some folks are probably not going to want to tackle that. But I appreciate y'all doing this. Sounds like we're going to, not cost us anymore, it'll be better for the community.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question. The contract amount that's here, is that good for one year or for an extended period?
That is for the first year. And the contract has several of the basis items in there. One would be that there is no provisions for any type of fuel surcharges or any other fees tacked on. It's based on the number of households to be picked up. It could vary slightly from this based on the actual number. This was an estimate. And the contract does provide for an annual increase based on the Consumer Price Index.
So is it a one-year contract with renewable options, or is it a longer?
For two additional years.
Okay. Okay.
If I understand correctly, our current vendor has been charging us a fuel surcharge, and that's been as high as...
On the last bill, it was almost right at $4,000.
And that's hard to budget when it swings.
Frankly impossible.
Yeah. So this is definitely an improvement. That's great.
And I'd just like to add to it. I just think it's a win-win for us and for our citizens because there's no additional cost to start it. But I think to have, I like the larger bins. I like them having tops on them, and I like the fact that we can roll them out. I think it's great. And I think that even if it is every other week, the fact that the materials are hidden for those two weeks, it's not like it's sitting out for, you know, for everybody to see. But I also like the educational component and that we have an opportunity to, with this education, remind people of how important it is to recycle for the environment and for our city and keeping all this out of our landfills. And so I think it's a new opportunity for us to kind of renew interest in the city in it. So I think it's wonderful, and congratulations for finding it.
And at the moment, we do not plan on picking up the existing 14-gallon containers. We'll allow the citizens to utilize those. They may want to keep them in the house, put stuff in and carry it outside, dump it periodically, rather than have to make a trip every time they have something.
That'll be every two weeks also, right? The smaller bins?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll still be every two weeks.
I'd just like to repeat something that Mr. Sinkamani said. If we have elderly citizens or citizens with a handicap that prevent them from rolling out their bins to the curb, you can call our solid waste department. What's that number? And they'll work with you. Our solid waste operators will go to your backyard and handle your garbage can and now your new recycling for you. And I think that's a great service that we offer. And that was just a good opportunity. And that was just a good opportunity to repeat that, that very nice service. Thank you.
Can I ask one question? What will we do to dispose of the smaller bins if people don't need them anymore? Is there some way we can recycle them? Or what exactly do we do with them?
I think they'll fit in that new 96-gallon container.
Can we just drop them in the bottom?
We do have some folks that do recycle those products as well. So, if there's citizens out there that just do not want them, we can collect them and we'll store up, you know, some of them, but then whatever we have to get rid of, we'll have it recycled as well.
So, people can just leave them out by the bins?
Correct.
They want them picked up? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add that during our process in interviewing candidates for the new city manager, this was one of the ideas that came up. So, we are learning from some of those candidates, the best practice they're doing in their cities. And I want to thank our city manager for taking it and running and making a difference in our city. So, thank you for your fast work on this.
Nice comment. Good comment. Mr. Melo, you have a comment?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I need a motion, folks, to award this contract. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to award a contract in the amount of $351,829.80 to Waste Pro of North Carolina Inc. to provide services for curbside recycling.
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote, or anything else? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks. Thanks for doing this.
Welcome to our community.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, yes. The next one we have here is number 13. Council to consider appointments to various boards and commissions. Do we have anybody today that would like to make a motion?
I do. I'd like to, we've got an application from Mr. Jeff Jones, who is an employee of Foodline, resident of Salisbury, and a member of Leadership Rowan. And I would like to nominate him for our Parks and Rec vacant.
Second. I'd second that.
Thank you for that. And thanks to Mr. Jones for applying. I have a motion, I have a second. Any comments, discussion before we vote on Mr. Jones? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Welcome to the city Parks and Rec, Mr. Jeff Jones. Thank you. 14. City manager's comments. Ferris?
Mayor, I do have four items for tonight. The first item is the presentation of our third quarter financials, and Mr. Softley will come up and give a brief overview. I know at our last meeting, we began to do more of a graphic presentation, so we hope that this presentation meets your expectations, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Overall, we're doing pretty well. Our general fund is starting to stabilize. Water and sewers doing well. We're trending, when you take out the additional revenue over the debt, about 3% above our revenue projections. And vibrant, we should be able to bring in this year without any additional inter-fund loans beyond what you set out for us as a goal.
I'll try to run through this briefly. The graphs which I have are the exact same graphs I had last time with one exception. I did have, on one, the colors reversed, and I've got them all in tandem, so they all match up. Well, budget is budget and actual is actual, so. Want to go through, like I said, very quickly. Property tax values are pretty much the exact same number I gave you last time. We haven't seen any change. There haven't been any major discoveries by our property tax office. It's still more than what we had budgeted, so we'll still have some additional revenues there for the year. Tax collection, we'll back, we'll all the way through to, you know, the penalties, the people now who's just not paying, so it's going up a point or two each month, but essentially it's flat between now and the end of the year. We should end up, I'm guessing, somewhere between 96 to 97 overall. Sales tax receipts still is running strong. It's comparably for nine months for the last few years, it's still significantly higher than it had been. It's more than what we had at our highest point way back in 2008. My concern here is although we've had strong months, I'm still hearing and reading about weaknesses as we're moving forward. So, at this point, I think we're going to finish up this year very strong. I'm still very apprehensive about budgeting much in increases for next year because of what I'm hearing in the media at the moment. Again, because it has been stronger, it has been stronger than what we anticipated this year. We are higher in our actual than our budget, which is good again, and that will help us overall. State franchise taxes, this is running a little bit lower than what we had thought. I don't think that we're going to meet budget this year on this. One of the primary reasons is if you call over to the winter, it was mighty warm. And one of the components there is utility franchise receipts based on natural gas and electricity. And a lot of, well, I know at our household, we didn't use a lot of electricity this winter, so unless it gets really hot really quick and people use a lot of electricity before now in June 30th, I suspect that we're going to run short. If I look at my overall revenues for the first nine months, I'm at 80%. This is exactly what you would anticipate, because majority, our largest tax item is property tax, and we've received a majority of that, those funds already. Correspondingly, if you look at expenditures, you expect to be around 75%. We're pretty much dead on it. A lot of the expenditures that the city does have, is fairly front-loaded, because as we adopt a budget and that gets approved, people go out and spend money pretty quickly initially. As it gets towards the end of the year, people's budgets are running a little low, and they're not quite as quick to spend money. So, I'm pretty pleased where we're at right now, just being 72%. Moving over to water and sewer, let me just back up one second. Based on where we are at, and it's not on the graph, but based on where we're at currently in the general fund, we should end up on the positive side this year. I'm not yet prepared to say what that number is, but we definitely will be on the positive side as opposed to last year when we ran a deficit. Moving over to water and sewer, if I look at my revenues for water sales and sewer sales, it's up and down, up and down. We're a little bit overall, again, this is a large function based on, at certain times of the year, how dry it is, and it's people watering loans or not watering loans, or companies producing. But at the moment, we're tracking around a little bit below water and sewer sales when I exclude my peak industries. And we do have one large industry that we do have here. But my peak industry this year has been using a lot of water. And we do not budget the peak industry, because you never, they may use no water this year and a whole lot of water next year, so you just don't budget for them. But if I look overall for my water and sewer sales, as you can see, I'm actually over-budget. And again, that's primarily because that peak industry has used a lot of water. Overall, through the first nine months, I'm pretty much dead on what I expect to be. I should be around 75%. I am at 75% of revenue. Expenditures, I should be low at this point. Primary reason for that, if you take a look at the back of your financials, when you look at the specific financial information, water and sewer has a large debt service payment that is paid in the last quarter. So, you need to be having, generating cash ahead of time to be able to make that payment. So, expenditures obviously would be less at this point. Moving over to vibrant, we'll continue to add customers. As of this point, we had about 1,800. Right now, when I checked yesterday, we're about 1,860, 1,870. We're continuing to add. We add in revenue. Quite frankly, like any other business, we've also had to eliminate some customers for nonpayments. So, had we not done that, the numbers would actually be higher. But like any business, if you're not paying, we've got to have paying customers. And again, billings pretty much track the revenues. One of the things you'll notice is that in February to March, the billings were pretty level. One of the reasons for that is with the February billing, we actually did some cutoffs and charged people some fees for equipment that we had not been able to pick up. So, it did inflate the billings for that month a little bit. Overall, my revenues and expenditures match, and the primary reason for that would be I used the inter-fund loan that council has authorized to make up that difference. And I do not anticipate using any more than what was authorized for the year. As we go through the last three months, currently, we're billing in excess of $250,000 a month, and our expenses should be less than that, because we've already paid all the debt service payments this year of 1.7 million. In transit, transit fares are at 66%. They are running a little bit behind. I really don't have a good reason for it at this point. Rideship is good, but our fares just are not there. It's not bad, but of course, on the other side is our expenditures are fairly matching that too, so there is a correlation a little bit between those two. With that, I really, unless you have some specific question, I do have in the back the actual financial statements through nine months showing the revenues and the expenses and hard numbers and not graphs.
John, I was happy to hear about vibrant. Very happy. We'll repeat that one more time. You say we're taking in around?
We're billing in excess right now of $250,000 a month.
Okay.
And our operational expenses are less than that currently.
Fantastic. Very proud of what y'all have done. Very good.
That's, but that's going forward these months. It doesn't include the months, because, you know, as with any budget, I've already paid my maintenance things. I've already paid for my debt services. A lot of things we've already paid for that are one-time expenses this year.
So, we may hit 2,000 customers hopefully by July 30th.
I would, I anticipate being 2,000 active customers by July 30th.
That'd be wonderful. Very good. Congratulations to everyone in vibrant for all the hard work and everything that you're doing and accomplishing. Couple of years ago, we were really struggling, and I think they've turned the corner, and I think things are looking very good for vibrant. I know as a mayor, I'm getting almost no complaints right now. I think our service is getting better, and appreciate all the work that's been done.
Well, and I will say, there's a lot of folks here who work very hard at that. Of course, as you know, we do have a new general manager, Mike Jury, and he's, has brought a wealth of knowledge and experience to assist us. And we've, have invested in a new business office manager who has some sales background, so we have tried to bring folks to the city who has experience and has industry background.
John, I understand we had to terminate a few customers for nonpayment.
Yes, sir.
But I'm sure we would take them back on if they pay their bills and get a cosigner to continue on, wouldn't we not?
Right. Over the last couple of months, we've actually been able to retain approximately 60 to 75% of those which we disconnected for nonpayment.
Okay. Thank you. Good job.
Just a question on the transit fund. Is the, are the expense, is the expense side of the equation something that we can control? Looks like revenues are way off what you expected, or can we control the expenses commensurate to that, or we have those as fixed expenses?
The reason revenues are way off is those revenues are dependent, at this point in time, the revenues are there on a cash basis. I do not record revenue until I receive the revenue from the state. We have billings to the state. We just haven't received it.
Okay. So, will those billings measure up the gap, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they will measure up the gap.
Okay.
Good point, Mr. Melo.
But that's one of those situations, and one of the reasons that council, a couple of years ago, formally authorized the use of inter-fund loans, because many of our grants, you have to expend the money before you can get the money.
Right. Right. But again, I'll just say again, how much I appreciate this information. You know, periodically to get an idea or a snapshot from you of how we're doing relative to the plan we set. I just think it makes us more informed council folk, and lets us, helps us to make better decisions. So, I just thank you for this. Thank you.
Mayor, for the second item, I'm going to ask Mr. Jury and Mrs. Bumgarner to come up and present on our secondary connection. Our staff has worked several months on this item, and it is in line with the city council's goal from the February retreat to increase the reliability of our new service.
Well?
What we're asking for today is a request for an amount of $184,977,000, which was a budgeted item for two reasons. Number one is, as we, as Doug mentioned, we're in the process of trying to turn up a second internet connection, and the technology we currently have doesn't allow us to do that. So, by adding the additional equipment and additional redundancy, we can add protocols such as BGP that allow multiple carriers. If one carrier goes down, the other one automatically comes up, which a lot of our customers have been looking for. They have been holding off until we do this expenditure.
And this is a sole source purchase, so it needs council approval along with the dollar amount, so.
Didn't we have planned on this being around 220,000 at one time? Is this better? Is this less?
Yes.
So, this is 34,000, 35,000 less, then?
That's correct.
Great. That's wonderful, wonderful.
And the reason for the sole source is, we always prefer to bid items. That is always our preference, but there are some areas, especially with this item, where the equipment is so specialized, and it involves integrating with the equipment we already have in our head in. And so, when this first came around, we wanted to make sure that we absolutely got the best price, given that it was a sole source. And so, our staff worked for several months, even looking at different types of equipment and different vendors. And this was, we did get the price down by a good amount.
Wonderful. Counsel, we need a?
A certain period of time this is for, or is this just the connection? Is this for a certain period of time?
It's a one-time fee, one-time cost.
One-time fee forever?
Correct.
Oh, great, okay.
And I think they said it came in around 35,000 less than we had originally planned.
So, it improves our level of service capacity, because we've got to now, we now have the redundancy.
Correct.
And as a result, it will potentially make folks who couldn't use us because we lacked redundancy able to use us going forward. So, it also helps us on the service or the sales side as well.
That's correct. Driving new business customers onto our network.
This is, this sounds like a great decision to me.
Great decision.
Mr. Mayor, I would love to make a motion unless there's other discussion. Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing a contract in the amount of $184,977, excuse me, $184,977.53 to CCI Systems to provide services and equipment for vibrant.
I second that, and I know there are some businesses waiting for us to have this so they can come on board.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that it's very impressive work on the part of our city manager and Mr. Jury and Mr. Beamer and all the staff. Anna, thank you all. This is great news.
Thank you.
Very happy to hear it.
We'd love to sign the new folks up, Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, that's right.
Maybe we make that 2,000 before July the 1st. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
You go ahead and second.
Okay, okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferris?
Mayor and council, on Monday, I had the pleasure of attending the county commission meeting where they took up the memorandum of understanding for 911 consolidation that you made the changes on and sent to the county. And here today, we do have our police chief and fire chief, and if they can come join at the staff table on my right. And also today, we have the director of what's going to be the new 911 center, Rob Robinson, and the county's emergency services director, Frank Thomason, if they can come join us at the center table. And at the meeting, the county commission did make two changes to your version of the agreement. There's a change on page one, and it was their preference that the compliance review committee, they were agreeable to a meeting three years rather than two, but they felt that if that committee needed to be extended, that that would rise to an issue that both elected boards should know, that that would be a serious issue to them. And so, they preferred that if it was not working after three years, to allow each board time to step in and take a look at it. And on page five, there was some additional language added, which is to provide or modify dispatch protocols and staffing levels, as mentioned in section one and two. And those sections include the amended language that you made regarding the staffing for both, both police and fire in order to meet or maintain Salisbury Police Fire accreditation and the performance standards set forth below, which were the national standards that the council of council approved to be in the agreement. At this point, I am prepared to recommend approval of this agreement pending any questions or clarifications that you may have, and I wanted these four fine gentlemen who serve our public safety committee to come up in case they have any words or any questions that you may have of them.
Just like very, very minor changes here, and you approve everything, and the chiefs do also?
Yes, sir.
Both chiefs are in agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming up. Don't leave yet. Wanna vote on this, maybe ask some questions. Anyone have any questions?
I'd just comment, like, thank them for their hard work. They made this work, and we're just happy to consolidate it. Thank you for...
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
This is definitely one of our items that we wanted for this year and for the consolidation, and we appreciate the county commissioners, we appreciate our staff, we appreciate all the folks that y'all worked hard on the city council. And for you two gentlemen out there, this is, I hope this comes to fruition, we're gonna vote on this a minute, and, you know, we're trying to run the city like a business. And with this consolidation, this will save the city of Salisbury five and a half million dollars over the next 10 years, folks. That is a lot of money for the city. So we're trying to, as council is trying to run this like a business, and I think we've made a good start with this. Mr. Farris and your staff, we appreciate what y'all have done. With saying that, I need a motion to pass this. Can I have a motion from someone to...
I'd be happy to make that motion. I would like to make a comment, though, before. There is a benefit that Salisbury receives through this consolidation, but there's also benefit the county receives through the 911 funds that are gonna be allocated as a result of our partnership. Do appreciate the work that you guys have put into it, appreciate the input. You guys, I mean, you guys are experts. All four of you are experts, and we, as long as you guys can make this document work for you and for what you need to do to provide service to the community, citizens of Rowan County, that's what's important, not really what the rest of us are driving at. But the bottom line is, this will help the county as well with some funding sources that they wouldn't have without this partnership. So I wanna thank you all again. I would like to make a motion that we approve the interlocal cooperative agreement as provided to us by the city manager.
Second? The motion have a second? Have any discussion before we vote? And that was a good point, Mr. Mayor. I believe the county receives 1.2 million, is that right, Mr. Farris? We do 50,000 every 10 years, and then you receive 700,000 from the state?
That's correct, sir.
So we both, we both win.
Absolutely.
The city and the county both win. And let's hope that this new center, we build a new center, that'll be good for our county also. So I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion again?
Mayor, I'd like to make one quick comment.
Sure, please.
This is a culmination of about 27 years' worth of work from both local governments. This started actually in 1985, when 911 was first realized as a goal by all the local governments in the county, and this calls, this pulls a culmination total for that effort. And again, the thanks go from Rowan County to Salisbury City Council, and we look forward to many years of positive working relationship for this effort for the citizens.
Great.
This is an important day for Salisbury and Rowan County. Congratulations to all.
Well, I tell you what it does. It proves that we can find mutually beneficial opportunities to cooperate. That's what it proves.
And, as you said, financially benefited for both of us.
Absolutely.
For both city and county.
And for the citizens, because they're gonna have one place, one centralized location. It's, we can work together, and I appreciate everybody's efforts.
And you'll be glad to know we had our meeting this, this after, or excuse me, this morning at the construction site, and everything's on schedule, and everything's going like it's supposed to be. We have a completion date on the new center of about March 26th of next year, so sometime shortly thereafter, we'll, I'll get to moving the new facility. So we're excited about that as well.
Always a new facility is nice, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I know. Okay, council, all in favor of this? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed to this? Motion carries, and thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks for coming up. Thank you, council. Mr. Farris?
One last item on the manager's comments. At the previous meeting, the mayor pro temp of Statesville used a term called TMDL. I thought I would have Mr. Beamer come give a presentation. I know you'd love to learn about another local government ease, an acronym, but this one is an important one. There's been a lot of discussion at the federal and state level of how government regulation costs business and harms business, and our experience has been that we are actually under regulations by the federal and state government that actually costs our local government. And things that cost our local government ultimately cost our citizens. And so those regulations that are placed upon us, we wanna make sure are legitimate and should be placed upon us, and we're gonna see that this year in the budget with stormwater. We saw that over the last two years on our mulch site, when Mr. Clyde came several months ago and asked why he can't get mulch. That is a direct result of federal and state regulations on us that triggers additional expenditures on our part to be able to properly continue what was a green thumb utopia in our community, where we picked up the leaves and limbs and citizens were able to come pick up mulch that we can no longer do because of regulations placed on us. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Beamer.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, members of city council. I guess I get the good fortune of explaining what a TMDL is, and I thought I'd try to, the actual acronym is Total Maximum Daily Load, but I found this definition that's a little more layman's term, a written plan for attaining and maintaining water quality standards in all seasons for a specific water body and pollutant. In 2004, High Rock Lake was listed by North Carolina Division of Water Quality as exceeding the standards for chlorophyll A and turbidity. This action requires a development of a TMDL to address these pollutants. However, the EMC, Environment Management Commission, has not yet deemed High Rock Lake is nutrient sensitive yet, and once that happens, then the TMDL process can be implemented. Wanted to show, this is a map of some of our participants in the YAC MPD River...
Mr. Beamer, can you define turbidity for us?
It's generally a measure, a measurement of the cloudiness of water.
Okay, thank you, sir.
A lot of sediment load in the, in the water itself.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we do speak in a lot of acronyms. These are, in our High Rock Lake watershed, these are the five communities that exceed population more than 10,000. We are one of, a member, one of the people who could be impacted by the TMDLs, Winston-Salem, Thomasville, Lexington, and Statesville are the other municipal discharges in this watershed. Chlorophyll A can be addressed by nutrient control of nitrogen and/or phosphorus. Turbidity is addressed by erosion control and treatment of urban runoff. So generally, turbidity is more controlled by stormwater management. Chlorophyll A is nitrogen phosphorus through your wastewater or point sources. However, I would like to know, there are a lot of non-point sources that contribute to this, but they are harder to regulate. Measures would be included in NPDS permits for wastewater and stormwater in the future. These are our current permit cycles for our wastewater, wastewater plant. We're in the middle of a five-year cycle, our next renewals in 2014. And for stormwater, they're also in a five-year cycle that gets renewed in 2016. Just wanna give you some timeframes of where we are. DWQ's implemented sort of a two-step process. First is building the tools, the models, monitoring, modeling. That step one has actually been seven years in the making. We're still in that phase. What's coming up is step two, which is developing the nutrient management strategy. We've actively participated in the advisory committee that was formed, also very active in the YAC MPD River Basin Association, key funding partner for monitoring and model review, and the modeling's underway, and I think we're in public comment period based on some of those preliminary results. As far as the next steps, in 2012, in fact, the end of May, there's a two-day nutrient forum that we'll be attending. The High Rock Lake stakeholder forums will be conducted in 2013, generally probably a year or two for strategies, and after 2015, implementation. It's kind of early to truly measure the capital impacts this, this could be to us, because we're not sure if they do implement a TMDL, if it's gonna be nitrogen, phosphorus, or both. As far as our wastewater facilities, we might be able to handle one nutrient more so than the other. So once we know what, what they would like us to try to limit, then we can start putting cost on it. True cost could be anywhere from 15 million to 50 million for the beginning of a new regional plant. I know those are large numbers, so we'd like to, we will be very active in participating through this process and questioning the science as it's delivered.
It's probably that's spread over all the different municipalities?
All of our ratepayers.
All the ratepayers?
That would just be for us.
You said 15 million dollars?
Depending on what the nutrients, what the limits they set for us. There have been TMDLs that have been imposed in Jordan Lake and Falls Lake, still waiting on how the results of those have been over time. So that's sort of part of the process, too, they evaluate the effectiveness of other TMDLs before implementing them, hopefully in other areas of the state. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Forgive me, I'm curious sort. Are we the cause of the issues that they're trying to correct? And here's the reason why I asked the question. My understanding is the water we put back into the system is cleaner than the water we take out. So are we the, I'll go back to my question, are we the cause?
We contribute to the nutrients. There are many other contributors. There's different sciences out there saying non-point sources, you know, farming and agriculture is a much larger contributor. Again, because we're a regulated body with a NC Deener permit, they can enforce regulations on us more so than they could on the agricultural community. So that's one of the reasons why we're actively participating in this process, learning about the science they're using in the modeling. We will question and then make sure that it is good science and be very active in the public comment period.
It's still very early in the planning process, and it is our intent to monitor it closely and litigate it if necessary, if we feel the regulations that are put on us are not legitimate in order to defend our ratepayers. We've got two big items out now that our staff is working on. This is one. The second is our negotiations with ALCOA related to the sediment, sedimentation issue, and currently, we're still in negotiations with them. But our, our goal is to make sure that there is, that impact on the ratepayers is of top importance to us.
And, and we're not in this alone. I mean, as I mentioned, the other communities, we are all, we have partnered and joined together to monitor, we actually, we actually do our own monitoring with them, we evaluate the results. I think they're, we're reviewing the models that were used, you know, questioning the science, making sure that is good science behind it, and that's something we will continue to do for the city of Salisbury and for our basin. Just wanted to kinda give you a little bit of background.
Please, please keep us updated, because this, this is kind of a little bit of a shock to us. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fine.
Farris, you have anything else?
That's it. We're gonna continue to work hard on any federal and state regulations as it does impact us on the mulch issue, and I do see Mr. Clyde in the audience who's asked me numerous times about the mulch in the past. Our trucks would pick up leaf and limbs, we'd take it to our material handling site, we'd process it, and then citizens could come pick up that mulch. And then Deener showed up and said, "We can't do that anymore." And we said, "We've been doing it for decades, and our citizens love it." And they said, "You don't have the proper permit." And we said, "That's fine, we'll get the proper permit." However, the proper permit triggers substantial capital expenditure on our part, and one of the items in the upcoming budget that I'll be recommending is that we have a group of citizens and experts take a look at our leaf and limb service before we consider such a large capital expenditure on our part. And so instead of being able, citizens being able to come pick up the mulch for the yards that they created in the first place, it has to be hauled off at a cost to us to sites that are permitted, and so that's an issue that we're working on. The large capital expenditure would be a concrete pad with covering to make sure that rainwater doesn't get into the leaf and limbs and then gets into the ground. Again, getting back to, is that a legitimate expenditure of, of tax funds for that purpose or not? And so it's a similar issue with stormwater that we're gonna have to tackle. These regulations are placed upon us without a funding source because it costs money to implement the regulations. And so it's our, our goal as your staff to make sure that any regulations that are placed upon us are legitimate and that they impact our taxpayers and our ratepayers at the minimal level possible.
It would seem if we have that kind of process to go through to pick up leaf and limb, other municipalities in our area also, I would assume, some of them also pick up leaf and limb. It would, it would seem to make sense that some sort of a regional approach to that, maybe county-wide approach to that, would help defray the cost over a larger population as opposed to being each municipality having to have their own concrete pad and covered structure. I'm just offering, when, when it comes time to talk about strategies for that, you know, let's see if we can't find ways to partner with other municipalities in our area that do this. I mean, I don't know what the solution is, but it doesn't make sense for each of us to have our own concrete pad if, if it's gonna be that kind of cost. So, and I'm just talking out of turn, but that's...
Are you volunteering for the committee?
I guess so, but...
We'd love to have you on it.
I think that's, he's an excellent choice. Excellent choice.
Good choice.
He's an out-of-the-box thinker. Does the county do mulch? Does the county have any, anybody know?
We're actually, in the, in the last meeting on it, we were gonna see if we could enter some discussions with the county and see if they had an interest in being part of the solution on this.
I'm interested in involved, in being involved in some discussions. I'm not sure if I can commit to committing till I know how often we're gonna meet, but I, it is something I think we, we need to figure it out. We need to solve it. And, and it's not just our issue, it belongs to others, too. So let's, let's all hitch the wagon together, and let's pull it in the same direction, so...
And mayor, your dad always told you there's no such thing as a free mulch.
Very true. Very true. Mr. Farris, you have anything else? I have a few announcements tonight. Downtown Salisbury Incorporated will, will host Spring Night Out Friday, May the 11th, 2010, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM in downtown Salisbury. Think these are really great events and a lot of fun for everyone. I would like, last week, I was a judge at a pie contest at Oak Park Retirement Community, and I want to announce that our firefighters won the overall event, the best pecan pie and the best pies of all pies. And I will have to say to the firefighters, that was the best pecan pie I have ever tasted in my life. So if we get short of funds, we can sell pecan pies. There they are, right there. Good, I'm glad they're up on the screen. Congratulations, gentlemen. And it was a lot of fun, that event. I really enjoyed that event. I ate a lot of pies that night. Congratulations to the firefighters. I'd like to congratulate our school system. I saw in the paper where California ranks Salisbury, Rowan Salisbury Schools among the top 10 in the nation for technology. And of course, we know our, our high school, Windsor Eagle, had done a lot for that, and congratulate all of our schools and our school system. I think that's wonderful. They were a little bit ahead of the curve on everything. I had a compliment today from an officer at Patriot Memorial, Officer Benjamin. Chief, please congratulate him. I heard he was helping folks and was a great help to some folks that were having a little bit of difficulty getting in there, so Chief Collins, thank Officer Benjamin. Is that his correct name? Good. Tell him thank you for above and beyond the call of duty and helping some citizens out. It's always nice to get compliments on our firefighters, our police officers, and our city staff, so please compliment him. Last thing, please keep sending in applications to our boards and commissions. We had another applicant today that we put on the board, and keep sending them in. We appreciate it. If you hear, hear us out there, we, we'd love to have you. We'd like the, the brain power. We need some, some new folks, and keep sending everything to Ms. Hurd here or on the website. I believe that's about all I have. We're 16, we took off the closed session. Anybody have any comments before we adjourn this meeting? Any comments? Anybody would like to adjourn the meeting? To have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some move.
Second? Okay.